All right, good morning, everyone. As you can tell, the mic's not working, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. And first of all, saying just good morning and welcome. It's good to see all of you again. And Pam, if you do a roll call, please.
Absolutely. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Charles Smith.
Here.
Richard Hilton. Katina Wiltshire.
Here.
Anna Olgi.
Here.
Tammy Purley Bogus.
Yes.
Stephen Summers. Geraldo Rosales.
Here.
Jim Gotts.
Here.
Diane Marlin. Carol Mitten.
Here.
Dennis Roberts.
Here.
Deb Frank Finan. Patrick Graham.
Here.
Will Kyles.
Here.
All right, very good. Everyone have a copy of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Number three is audience participation. Do we have any audience participation? Okay, there being none, we'll move on. Item four is the RPC draft meeting minutes from October the 25th. Do I have a motion to approve the RPC draft meeting minutes from the October 25th meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, dance. Okay, the motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I probably should have asked if there was any discussion, but we got through it real fine.
(laughing).
I didn't see any problems.
Okay. Item five, consolidated financial report. Let's come from Betty.
Sure. So you have our consolidated report as of October 31st. Our fund balance is just over 10.8 million. Our accounts receivable are just under 700,000, which is typical for this period in the year because of the increased activity this fall, startup of the Champagne West location in particular.
That's it, okay. Do I have a motion to accept and place on file a consolidated financial report for October 2019?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you, motion carries. Let's move to item six, which is a list of bills.
Sure, you have the list of bills. And this, again, reflects accelerated activity this fall, particularly energy assistance payments for our LIHEAP clients. We have an increased number of WEOWA participants for our workforce program because it's the fall semester, so lots of enrollments, as well as the startup and the operations at our Champagne West and all of our other Head Start facilities. So there is nothing unusual to report in the list of bills.
Do I have a motion to accept and place on file the list of bills for October 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Are you keeping track?
I am.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion before you vote? Any no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's move down to item seven, which is the action items, purchasing policy updates. Betty?
Yeah, so the last time we updated our policy was about a year ago, but subsequent to that, in June of 2018, OMB at the federal level increased statutory changes to micro purchasing and simplified acquisition threshold for organizations that receive financial assistance. They increased these micro purchasing thresholds from 3,500 to 10,000, and the simplified acquisition from 150 to 250,000. These are applicable to all grantees that receive federal funding, consistent with the uniform requirements. And although this policy memorandum gives us that broad flexibility, ours is more restrictive, primarily because state statutory requirements require bid or RFPs for counties under 2 million, and that threshold is 30,000. But what we would like to do, in an effort to, you know, recognize some of these higher thresholds, eliminate some of the confusion that we have among the staff, and reduce our administrative burden, we'd like to increase, and I have those highlighted in the policy, the micro purchase, which would be considered less than $10,000. The small purchase, which we characterize as 10 to 30,000, and 30,000 and above would be either by sealed bids or RFPs. As an aside, I ran this by the county executive and the county auditor. They intend to provide some sort of similar proposal to the county board in July, but they were on board with increasing these thresholds. Now that said, in all of our purchasing, whether it's a micro purchase or a small purchase, the staff is required to seek and secure government pricing or government alliance pricing before we purchase. So in every instance, we prefer government pricing, and that's throughout this policy. The other change that's in this policy in recognition of the fact that our staff has grown to around 350 is we had in section on the allowability under employee recognition, that threshold was at 500, and we're requesting that we increase that to 750, because we do have a number of employee recognition events, and we're required to do that under the Head Start guidelines as well. So the highlighted changes are in here, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any discussion? Yes, dance.
So when you say federal pricing, is that what you? I'm not sure exactly, government pricing, what is exactly?
So we qualify for federal pricing. We also qualify for the state pricing, so we always go on the federal and the state, and we seek that pricing, but oftentimes, that pricing is higher than we would get from a private vendor. But our staff is required to always provide information on federal or state pricing, or a government purchasing alliance. There are several of those cooperative purchasing alliances, so we get the best price.
Okay, so these are like standardized prices for certain services?
That's right. And we do a lot of bulk price. We do so many purchases for Head Start, food, commodities, supplies, janitorial supplies. This would really help us in terms of eliminating some of the paperwork. The county's $5,000 threshold has been in place for I don't know, 20 years, and so to do a purchase order for 5,000 or under is just really more work if we have the budget authority to do this, and we get government pricing, which we always try to do.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other discussions? Can I have a motion to place or approve the purchasing policy update?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
Second, all right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item B, under seven, is a five-year grant funding, our Head Start and early Head Start expansion. Brandy?
Good morning. In your packets, I provided documents to support the five-year grant funding applications for Head Start, early Head Start, and the early Head Start expansion. I do want to point out that the early Head Start expansion is also a five-year grant plus a continuation grant this year, so we have to report some of the information from our startup and where we are currently, as we, you know, as we're progressing through the startup and the actual full grant. The Head Start funded enrollment, in your packet, the Head Start funded enrollment is, remains at 435, with center-based programming, home-based services, and family childcare partners. The program operations for that is $3,262,529. We do budget in the training and technical assistance to offer support to our staff for professional development growth, and then also the non-federal share at 825,395. For the early Head Start funded enrollment, it remains the same at 141, and that includes pregnant women, infants, and toddlers. The program operations is $2,073,200. The training technical assistance is $47,534, with the non-federal share equalling out to The early Head Start expansion, which is our current, our new, our new programming, it remains the same at 90, infants and toddlers, and pregnant women. The program operations is $1,837,774. Training and technical assistance budget is $45,944, and non-federal share is $470,903. The program schedule and options did not change much across the board, with the exception of the part-day sessions. We have more families who are working, going to school. We also have foster care families and families who are homeless and needing to search for jobs. We've eliminated the three-and-a-half-hour morning and afternoon sessions to provide that, you know, that extra support for families. So now we only have six- and 10-hour sessions available, as well as, again, the home-based and family childcare partnerships, which those partnerships allow families to place their child, or their children in care for at least 10 hours a day. Since these are five-year grant applications, I included additional required documents, such as the program goals. These program goals are developed with our team, but also with our parents, the self-assessment results, the community assessment, the governance, leadership, and oversight capacity, and the health and safety screeners. These are additional documents that need to be approved by all of you, as well as our policy council. Today, I'm asking your support to submit the five-year grant funding applications for Head Start, early Head Start, and early Head Start expansion.
Okay. Any discussion on the topic?
I just think it's a great idea, and to have that supported by federal grants is excellent, so let's do it.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right. I need a motion?
I need approval of the item, the five-year grant funding.
Second.
All right, like when you jump right in there, that's good.
No problem.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? It's repetitive, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good. Item C, December 19, RPC meeting date change for discussion. Delitzo?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we would like to request a meeting change date. The scheduled meeting, I think, was on December 27th, and we have three items that would require for us to meet earlier than the 27th, and so we would like to request that we move the meeting to December 13th for three main purposes. First is to have the long-range transportation plan to be approved by the commissioners. And then, at our last meeting, I think we reported to you that we were scheduled to present to the commissioners our compensation plan for FY 2020. We have been implementing a new performance management system, which has delayed us getting that process completed. We will have everything complete and present to you our compensation plan on the 13th of December. The third part, I think, the Community Action Advisory Board will be presenting revised bylaws, and so in order for those to take effect January 1st, we would like to also present those at the December 13th meeting. So we're really seeking approval to move the meeting from the 27th of December to the 13th of December.
Any discussion?
I'll make a motion if you do that, make that motion.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor. We need a second.
Second.
We have a second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Item D is proposed 2020 RPC meeting calendar, calendar dates.
Yes.
And discuss that?
Sure, it's, the calendar is presented in the binders, page 192. That's for our meetings in FY 2020, and we will need approval from the commission so we can post these for the public to see.
So I need a motion to approve the proposed 2020 RPC meeting calendar dates as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
You said the dude, I'm sorry, I missed it.
I said.
Hi.
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good, motion carries. Let's move to item eight, which is Head Start, early Head Start. Brandy?
Okay. In September, our program reached 100% enrollment for Head Start and early Head Start, and 98% for early Head Start expansion. We are currently at 100% for all programming at this time, so just to kind of put that in there to you. The attendance for September was 88.80%, and we need to be above 85%, so that is a goal from the Head Start performance standards. And we served 16,522 nutritious meals, so I thought that was really important to share with you. According to the Family Services Report, we had, we served 12 homeless families, or since, since September, we've served 12 homeless families, and three of those families have required, acquired housing. 313 families engaged in the family partnership agreement process, which allows us to support our families in reaching their goals and also addressing any needs they might have. Also in September, the Early Childhood Division honored Dolores Lee. She, she retired after 18 years of service as a Head Start family childcare provider. Many current and past children, families, and staff attended the celebration and wished her well. On September 24th, the Early Childhood Division held this annual self-assessment and program planning meeting. The report was shared in the month's packet, in this month's packet. Next year, we plan to offer weekend and evening focus group meetings to generate more input from our families and also our staff. Also, in September, or no, sorry, in November, and I want to kind of give you an update as I've given you an update about the West Champagne site, we successfully opened the RPC Early Child Education Center at West Champagne on November 13th. For the first phase, we are serving 40 infants and toddlers, 17 preschool-aged children, and 10 pregnant women, and the additional 40 infants and toddlers and 34 preschoolers will be served hopefully by March 1st. Since opening, the staff have worked hard to build relationships with families and the children, and they've offered many open houses and screenings through our on-the-job training program. Five teacher aides have achieved a Child Development Associate's credential, and we expect 13 more over the next four months. This credential qualifies the teacher aides to apply for early Head Start teacher positions, which also increases their wage. In closing, I want to give a special thanks to the Parkland Women's Basketball Team, the Rantool Theater Group with the book mentors, Mayor Deb Finan, or Frank Finan, Mayor Diane Marlin, Joan Dykstra Village, President Savoy, and Scott Eisenhower, Rantool's Village Administrator for taking time out from their busy days to read to our children, and that occurred this month, so I'm open to any questions I might have.
Any questions? I have a motion to accept and place on file the Head Start, early Head Start management reports, including the financials and service area reports dated November 22 of 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item nine is program division updates.
Sure, so as Delitzo mentioned, we're busy completing agency-wide performance evaluations using a new performance tool, so it's taking us some time, and also developing that merit-based compensation plan, which we will present to the board in December. We also completed a program-specific audit for the police training program for FY 18, and that was successfully completed and submitted to the state. As I mentioned at the last meeting, the State Department of Commerce advised us that the Champagne County single audit is, again, delinquent, and that they could initiate stop payment procedures. I've not heard any updates on that, because that communication goes through the auditor's office, but last week, I did receive correspondence from the Office of Head Start in Washington indicating that, again, the county's audit is delinquent. The due date was September 30th for all federal and state agencies. It has not been uploaded to the state portal or the federal clearinghouse. As you, as Brandy reported, we're applying for over $7.5 million of continuation funding, and our concern remains that these funds could be at risk if we're not fully compliant. As I also reported, RPC completed all of their audit field work with Baker Tilly back in February 2019, and there were no issues at that time. My understanding from Darlene, the county executive, is that the auditor's office intends to upload the 2018 audit on December 13th, 2019, and I just wanted the board to understand that we have state and federal agencies requesting information about this, so we're doing what we can to, to make sure the communication continues between the auditor and the state agencies so that our funding is not at risk.
I understand. Any discussion?
I have a question. I missed last month's meeting. Is there a reason why the auditor's office is so far behind?
Well, we've tried to find out about that. I'm, I'm not quite sure. I know last year, perhaps one of the issues was the sale of the nursing home. This year, I'm not able to get much information, but I have advised them and have forwarded these federal and state communications to me, and have indicated that we would appreciate being, you know, we would like to have information so that we could report back about progress, or, you know, why, why they're delinquent. But this, of course, raises a red flag for us, because when you're applying for competitive funding, as we do, we are fully grant and federal and state funded, that whenever there's a compliance issue like this, or a delinquency, it's always a red flag, you know, and so, you know, we, of course, are very concerned about that, and the stop payment, which apparently they've communicated with state DCO. I've not heard back about that. But I just wanted this board to be aware of the issue.
I mean, I don't know, is there anything that we can do? I mean, this is critical.
I wish. I mean, we've, I've been pushing since September to get a timeline. I knew it was late last year. I don't know that it's really tied to the nursing home, because that, that really will affect next year's audit. So, yeah, I've been given the same timeline, I pushed for that timeline, and finally got it last week, and unfortunately, I, I don't have a high level of confidence that it'll actually happen on. There's a really tight timeline in there that.
I mean, I'd like to go on record saying this is totally unacceptable, as far as here at regional planning with all the services we offer and the grants and things. I think it's totally unacceptable.
I can't disagree. I know I've pushed that, I think our next year are, so it won't affect the 2019 audit, but then we are up for bid for new auditors. I think it is a combination of our audit staff and our outside auditor that it's late, as much as I've been able to dig in. We did not have that trouble, as far as I can look back. We had, I think Clifton Larson Allen did the last, was the last audit firm, so every three years, that gets bid, and, and it's been changed, as far as I can see, every three years as well, so we are due for a change, and it will be welcomed by many departments. Because we've got the same thing with the Circuit Clerk, has an audit that was due in September as well, so.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? I appreciate your comments, appreciate that.
Could I, I don't know if it's appropriate, but given that we're going to be meeting on December 13th, would it be appropriate to ask someone, Darlene or somebody, to come and, and either represent that it has been uploaded or will be uploaded by the closing of the month that day, or give us more of an explanation about what's going on? I mean, that, that is a show of concern, call somebody in front of the body.
And I agree, I think they should be all accountable. I mean, I think the office even, you know, before that deadline, should be somehow held, I mean, because pushing it to that date is extremely critical if nothing's happened, you know? So, yeah, to me, honestly, it'd been nice if, if they would have had some kind of explanation for us by today, and, and that's why I said I'm just really shocked that it's that way. I mean, especially, like I said, you look at these programs, and you look at the money that's being held up, and, you know, putting at risk the funding, I just, like I said, I'm, I'm just really, when I read it in the minutes and things, I was shocked personally.
Yeah, there's a lot at jeopardy here. So is it the general consensus of the commissioners that we would like to have that report by the December 13 meeting, or have someone here to?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Okay, then I'll take a vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good. You've had that?
Yep.
Okay, sounds good. All right, and thank you, Tammy, and board, appreciate that. All right, next is Becky.
All right, thank you. Good morning, everyone. The Human Resources Report included in your packet today provides the personnel transactions from October 16th, 2019, to November 18th, 2019. The highlights of the Human Resources projects for this reporting period include successful recruiting and hiring of 51 employees in the last 90 days. Fifty-one.
Wow.
Thank you for that. Several of the new hires are teachers and teacher aides that are assigned at our early childhood centers, with many starting their careers at the new West Champagne site. The HR department is currently working on talent acquisition strategies to fill another 51 positions. That's the magic number right now, with approximately a dozen in progress today. To support the staffing, staffing needs of our growing organization, we hired an additional HR professional who provide primary, whose primary focus is talent acquisition and employee retention. Our new HR professional, Janice Mann, is expanding recruitment efforts by utilizing social media, networking, movie theater advertising, billboards, and our employee referral program. She is also assessing our recruitment, selection, and interview processes. We're working diligently with all of the divisions of RPC to really identify those candidates who are motivated by the mission and vision of this organization. RPC, as of yesterday, has 306 employees, with projections to increase FTEs to 375 by the second quarter of 2020. Our management team is working diligently to attract, motivate, and retain the best talent to make strategic decisions about our total, by, excuse me, by making strategic decisions about our total rewards package, flexible work schedules, training, career planning, and employee appreciation initiatives. I'd be happy to answer any questions today.
All right, thank you, Becky. All right. Next is Lisa Benson with Community Service Director.
Good morning. I will echo what everyone has said. We've been very busy with staffing issues and identifying staff for new programs, and then also working on reviews. Just going to get some highlights of some data in our division. In our developmental disability services, in the first quarter of the year, we served 202,298 individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and provided nearly 10,000 service hours. So that was the expansion to the 13 counties with our developmental disabilities. We also currently are providing permanent supportive housing vouchers for 40 homeless households, and we're working on filling four vacancies in that program, so working with homeless households to identify housing where we will supplement their rent. We also have 21 households that are provided time-limited tenant-based rent assistance, so they also receive annual rent assistance. We, since the beginning of the emergency family shelters, have served, so that opened in June of 2016, and to date, end of September 2019, we have served 147 households, 484 unduplicated persons, 171 of those adults, and 313 children. So that's the emergency shelter for families. We also have been doing some diligent work in providing financial literacy workshops on a monthly basis. From January, and then through the end of November, we've been able to serve 54 participants, and about 95% of those report an increased financial well-being. We were very happy, I think it was last weekend, on Saturday, we did a LIHEAP blitz for our LIHEAP program in Rantool. That happened on Saturday morning. We worked very closely with the village, and that was very fruitful. So the village actually sent out notices to their participants that this was happening. We were able to see 75 individual households, and five of those, only five of those were over income. What we also saw with that, a number of these individuals that presented, they had employment income. So that says to us that we were reaching a, a group of people that maybe weren't able to come in during, during traditional business hours. 25% of those that we saw, approximately 25%, we had never served with LIHEAP before, so we were able to reach individuals that we've never reached before. With, also with LIHEAP from, I think what 10 is, October 1st through middle of November, we have served approximately 1,648 individuals. we have served approximately 1,648 individuals. On average, each day, they schedule 75 to 80 appointments. And with factoring the no-shows, we usually have about an average of 62 appointments every day. So, yeah. So there were some highlights from the work that we're doing. We also are actually, we started on November 1st. We are collecting data with the men's emergency shelter at the CU at Home, the Phoenix. They have served approximately 80 different men in their seasonal emergency shelter. And I believe the maximum to date that they have served on one night is around 45. So I can take any other questions and if there's other things related to the work we're doing in community services, I can speak to that also.
Yes, sir.
You're doing, excuse me, you're doing a lot of great work, you know, obviously being in oriented into the board. I'm seeing a lot of great work that we're doing. My question, and I don't want to assume, and I've seen some reports, I've had my own speculations, but do we do, with the work that we're doing, the work that you're doing specifically, is it a stretch to say that we have a poverty issue in Champaign County?
I think that's a large question that I don't know that I can answer specifically. Do we have a poverty issue?
Because I see, because the work that's done is great, right? And every, we are plotting and that's good, but when you see the numbers go up, something in your mind should say like, what's going on? Like, but you may not be able to answer that. Maybe I'll have to do some digging, some digs, some deeper digging, but I'm starting to wonder if we have a poverty issue in our community.
Particularly in?
Outside of normal issues.
Not really an answer, but I'm going to take a stab at it. I think that even though the economy is doing well, we still have individuals in our community that have certain barriers, whether it's barriers to employment. I mean, we have individuals that have, you know, disabilities. We're also serving seniors who are on fixed income. So in some respect, I think those households, regardless of how great the economy is doing, they're still struggling in our, in this economy.
Yeah. And that's a deep question. Maybe, I know we have a lot of things to do, but, you know, we say the economy is doing well and we usually use a numeric, you know, 5.7, 3 point, that, you know, unemployment is usually that metric that we use. But if you're working at McDonald's, your economy isn't doing well. You know, it's just numerically, people are, you know, assigned to a job or have a job.
One thing that we need to take into consideration is we cannot rely on the numbers from the census for this community, in particular related to poverty, because it includes all the students here at the Champaign-Urbana area and their income level is below the poverty line. And they are included as when they do the calculation for the rate of poverty. Then there is a significant number of individuals who are attending the university who are part of that poverty. Then it's not, the number is not really representative of what is going on in the community in terms of the households excluding the students. And there is no way for us to separate that data here.
I think the other thing that, you know, in community services, that's a key thing that we try to work on is addressing poverty issues. One of the things that I think about, so many of the programs that we have require income and poverty percentages, I think it's important to have a broad set of programming. So, so many of our programs require really low income, 125% poverty. I believe with our workforce, it's 80%. It's really low, whatever. I can't remember exactly. But essentially, we also do programming that gets at those coming up to the 200% poverty. So as you move people out of poverty, you still need to have some supports in place and opportunities. Otherwise, it's not a good transition. So we work to try to diversify the type of programming that we have that we can move them out of poverty more successfully.
How are clients responding? I know that there are several programs like SWIFT. Parkland has a great program that they're working through as far as, you know, increasing people's, offering people a career. How successful are we, have you seen, I said, people, or more so your clients more so, at getting that training? Are they taking advantage of that training? Or are there, I mean, obviously, I know there are barriers, but what do you see as far as those programs that we have to kind of help uplift people? What's the word on the streets on how effective those programs are?
People are definitely taking advantage of the programs. And the programs are adapting. So there was a much focus on formal educational training, college-based training. The SWIFT program, a number of the programs that we do at Workforce, we've begun to also incorporate on-the-job training and stackable credentials so that you don't have to have a full associate's degree. You can go and get trades and things like that. And that is definitely helpful to many of the people that we are working with and they are taking advantage of that.
The other thing I would add is that in the, in a packet this time is our community assessment. And we identified as of September 2019, the unemployment rate for Champaign County was 3.5% compared to the 3.9% unemployment rate for the state, which shows a 3% decrease from last year resulting in approximately 169,583 fewer unemployed men and women. Also, the 2019 Heartland Alliance Illinois Poverty and Wellbeing Index reports Champaign County as among 45 counties on the poverty watch and warning list. So there might be some information that you might find interesting in there that could help with your research.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lisa, I have a question for you around the mental health issues. That's a lot of services that you're giving out to, what, over 2,000 people, I believe you said?
Developmental disability?
Yes. Can you tell me how those services are being delivered about your workforce? Is it LCSWs? Are you getting students from the University of Illinois to deliver those services or is this, are this full licensed clinicians doing face-to-face work here?
Sure, I can tell. So the program that I referenced is specific to persons with intellectual developmental disabilities. And the credential for those staff is called a QIDP, which is a qualified intellectual disabilities professional. So they're required to have a bachelor's and then they have to have certain number of years of experience or hours of experience working with persons with intellectual developmental disabilities. So all of our staff, and we are able to recruit. That is what, what you're asking about, I think particularly, is mental health practitioners. There are oftentimes higher credentials and more extensive experience. They often refer to those as a qualified mental health practitioner, a QMHP, and they are required to have a master's degree and more clinical training. Those positions are harder to recruit for. But we don't specifically have any, we do not provide any mental health specific programming here.
I understand.
In my division.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. All right. Any other questions with Lisa? Okay. Then we'll move on to Rita.
Before we do the presentation for the Champaign-Urbana Long Range Transportation Plan 2045, I'm going to provide some updates regarding planning and community development work. Probably you're already aware, but the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District was awarded from the Department of Human Services, a regional intermediary grant to conduct a census outreach for hard-to-count populations in the six counties on east central Illinois. Those are Champaign, Douglas Ford, Iroquois, Payette, and Vermillion. As part of that grant application, RPC submitted an application as a sub-recipient under the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District to conduct outreach for the 0 to 5 population working with head start staff, homeless working with community services, seniors and low-income population in Champaign County working with community services. The grant was awarded and we will be receiving $180,000 from the grant awarded to the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District to do all this work. The Department of Human Services have been late on submitting, approving the grants and all that, then will be including the grant in the next fiscal year beginning January 1st to do all that work, even though at this time we are doing that work. As part of that, on December 6th, we are working with the GY on campus to have a luncheon at the Champaign Public Library to educate elected officials regarding the census and how to talk about the census and the impact on the census in our community. Then all of you will be receiving an invitation to the luncheon at the Champaign Public Library on December 6th. Staff has also been working on conducting business surveys as part of the innovation grant that we received from DCO. We have already completed phase one of the project, which was doing surveys and determining the labor shed for the five county area of the LWS 17. At this time, we have conducted about close to 60 business surveys and we are in the process of analyzing the data to produce a report. Also, the staff worked with the Champaign County Highway Engineer on putting together Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant to do roadway improvements to Sydney Road that is also known like County Highway 15. The grant was awarded by IDOT to the Champaign County. The total amount of the project was is $4.5 million. The grant that was received that was prepared by RPC staff was for $2.4 million. Then 50%, more than 50% of the amount was through the grant that we prepared for the Champaign County Highway Department. Also, staff attended the National Ampo Conference in Baltimore in late October. That's why I wasn't here at the previous meeting. And we received the honorable mention for outstanding overall achievement, achievement for a non-TMA NPO at the national level for the plan that we developed, the freight plan that we developed for the Champaign-Urbana area. And lastly, on Monday from 5 to 7, we'll be having a public meeting at the Village of Rantoul for the Rantoul Transportation Plan that we are conducting there and also the four Seer Auto School Plans that we are conducting for the four elementary schools in the Village of Rantoul. If you have any questions, then we'll move into the long-range transportation plan presentation. Any questions at this time? No? Okay. As part of our federal requirement, every five years, we need to update our long-range transportation plan for the Champaign-Urbana area. Then the last step in that process is to get approval by the RPC Board because the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission is the designated NPO or Metropolitan Planning Organization for the Champaign-Urbana area. Then over the last months, we have been presenting the plan to different agencies, different organizations. We'll be presenting the plan today to you. And then our hope is to get approval for the plan to send it to IDOT and Federal Highway in December by the RPC Board, December 13th. On December 4th will be KUAT's technical, December 11th KUAT's policy, and then December 13th, the RPC Board and with that will be able to send the plan to Federal Highway and IDOT to fulfill the federal requirement. Then Ashley will go over the plan and explain all the work that we have done over the last two and a half years. Ashley?
Hey. Thank you. I know some of you have seen this website and heard my presentation before, so bear with me, but this is our web plan for 2045. We have done a web document this year instead of a print document so that it can be more accessible to the public and the agencies that use the plan. We also have our public comment period currently going on. So if people visit the website, they see this alert and they can press any of these little buttons here and it'll start, I actually didn't mean to actually press it. It'll open an email directly to our staff that references the section that they were looking at. I would like to get rid of that. Okay.
And Ashley, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So is the plan still fluid enough to take the public questions or our comments and adopt them into the plan or is it pretty much just for FYI?
That's a good question. So the public comment period officially just closed yesterday. And so now we're in the process of processing all of the comments and then we will be making adjustments to the plan. So right now, we are still changing the plan and the final one won't be sent out for review and approval until next week when we send out the packet for the KUAT's technical committee.
So would it be possible for me to submit or is it too late now already?
I mean, technically ended yesterday, but, you know, we'll, at this meeting, and you can certainly email us directly, and we will be considering all of that input in the next few days. So yes, there is still time.
I think it's until Sunday because we need to send the packet by Tuesday.
Right. So I've been out of town a lot and so I just haven't tracked all this and I'd like to make a couple of suggestions.
Sure. Sure, sure. So this is the homepage here. We have an overview of what the plan is. As Rita mentioned, it's a federal requirement. We update it every five years. This is our planning area. This is the census-defined urbanized area that includes Champaign-Urbana, Bonneville, Savoy, and Tolono. We've also included Mohammed within our planning area. The idea is that we incorporate any land that may be adjacent to or relevant to the urbanized area over the next 25 years because that's the planning horizon. And when we do these long-range transportation plan updates, we include all of our local agencies and roadway agencies that are relevant to the metropolitan planning area, but we also try to incorporate other agencies that are relevant to transportation and mobility more generally. So agencies like Pace, the Center for Independent Living, the University of Illinois Center on Health Aging and Disability participated in this round, Park Districts, Economic Development Corporation, Housing Authority, Champaign County Bikes. We try to incorporate as many different voices as possible in order to get a well-grounded sense of what people are looking at in terms of how to improve overall mobility in the region in the future. So that is our steering committee. We met with them quarterly throughout the process. And these are the general contents of the plan. So the overview has a summary and some history of transportation legislation and previous plans. In existing conditions, we cover things like all local data in the area that could be relevant to transportation, demographics, land use, environment, health, and transportation. We set goals for the future and then we establish an overarching vision for 2045. So the federal requirements are such that we look at regionally significant projects for the region so that the federal government can have a sense of what our financing priorities will be into the future. It takes a long time for large-scale infrastructure projects to be planned and implemented. And so this is their way of making local agencies think further ahead than they normally would so that we can really think larger scale what we want to change for the future of our community. So while we focus on regionally significant projects, we're also paying attention to the local needs of each agency within the community. So I'm just going to give you a brief overview here of the contents and then we'll show you one of the videos that we compiled with a local illustrator to help with our public engagement. So for demographics, we look at all sorts of things, age and gender, disabilities, race, ethnicity, income and poverty, population and density, employment. And there's a lot of data in this section. I'm not going to go through it all with you, but I'll just point out that we have a lot of charts that break down, like I said, individual agencies compared with the US or other kind of metrics so that we get a sense of who we are individually as well as collectively as a region. We also looked at, for instance, environment during the public comment period. We had a lot of discussion from people about concerns about greenhouse gas emissions. We know that the transportation sector makes up almost 30% of all greenhouse gas emissions in the US. And within the transportation sector, our individual vehicles that we use every single day make up almost 60% of that. So people are concerned about that. They're aware about that. They want to reduce our, their individual greenhouse gas emissions and also increase walking and biking for health as well as reducing their greenhouse gas emissions. Health is another topic of discussion. This is a more abstract connection and I don't have specific data to share for this one. It's a little bit too in-depth, but this is an ongoing research project we have within KUATs where we are looking to better understand the connection between physical activity on a daily basis and local population health. So if people are walking more, biking more, even using transit more allows people to get more physical activity into their daily routine, population health increases or improves. So we look at local incidents of things like obesity, type 2 diabetes, and respiratory illnesses that we know have a direct kind of researched and proven connection to physical activity. And we activity, and we correlate that with our physical or our active transportation infrastructure. So biking, walking, and transit infrastructure in the community. How is that related to local incidences of obesity, diabetes, and respiratory illnesses? Because even small improvements in local transportation infrastructure could increase or improve population health. So we want to pay attention to those connections and be able to help local agencies prioritize where they can make improvements to have maximum impact. And then lastly, transportation. There's a lot of detail on all modes of transportation in our community in this section. We look at commuting behavior, pedestrians, bikes, transit, cars, trucks, trains, and airplanes. And I'll just point out here, I've been talking a lot about active transportation, walking, biking, and transit. This chart here shows us the commuting mode for workers 16 years and older. This is the most consistent data we have for how people get around the community. But it only is looking at workers getting to work. It doesn't include recreational activities, trips to the supermarket, trips to school necessarily. It's just commuting modes. So this is just a small portion of trips in the community, but we do see that these gray areas are people driving alone, so of course, that's the vast majority of all trips. But here in Champaign and Urbana, you see that our rates of walking, biking, and taking transit are significantly higher than, of course, in the smaller communities, but even for the nation overall. So there's a lot of pride in Champaign and Urbana about people being able to walk, bike, and take transit to work, and we're still keeping commute times down at an average of 15.6 minutes, which is a real highlight for recruiting people for jobs here and also for recruiting people at the university as well. So while we were collecting all these existing conditions, we were also engaged in a lot of public involvement. So we wanted to get local residents involved in the plan and hear their input on what they see as the strengths and weaknesses in the transportation system. Overall, throughout the update process, we were able to come in contact with -- we got over 1,200 transportation system comments, over 1,100 surveys submitted, we held over 27 events. And when we're planning these outreach events, we're always paying attention to making sure we have a record at representative sample of the population. So we want to make sure we're coming in contact with underrepresented populations, but also just who is living here. If we know we have 14% of African-American and Black individuals in the community, we want to make sure we're coming in contact with at least that many, you know, providing input for our plan. So we track that as much as possible by collecting voluntary demographic information whenever we do outreach. So we asked people what they thought the strengths and weaknesses were of the transportation system, and with that, we collected or we developed -- I don't want to make you dizzy, but I'm going to scroll down pretty quickly here. We have this input map that we developed where we have this map here full of different comments, different individual comments about the transportation system. So people could add a comment wherever they wanted about any mode of transportation so that we could take that into account in the plan and also pass it along to local agencies in charge of those roadways. So this map is live and remains available to the public, although we've closed it for comment because we can't continue to maintain it. So that's part of our public input process. With all of that information and public input, we also -- we've developed some goals for the future. One of the questions that we asked in our public input was what are your three top priorities for the transportation system in the future, and that helped us develop goals and objectives moving forward. Every year, we track these with an annual report card so that we know how much progress we're making toward our goals. And I won't go through them all, but our overarching goals are safety, multimodal connectivity, equity, economy, and the environment. So for each of these sections, we have our overarching goal, a table of objectives and performance measures that we can track moving forward, followed by a list of strategies and responsible parties that can help us take steps to meet these goals and objectives. So with our goals and objectives, then, we develop future projects. So like I mentioned, the federal requirements are that we establish regionally significant projects for the long-term future. This is a map we used during another phase of public output or public input where we mapped some of the regionally significant projects that we had heard from the public and also our local agencies as priorities, and then we tried to correlate them with our overarching goals and objectives so that we could connect for people. When we say we want to improve equity, what does that mean in terms of physical transportation projects? So in terms of equity, some of those regional projects that would improve that, the colors are kind of hard to see up here, but that would be we have some University Avenue safety projects and ADA improvements, the Kickapoo Rail Trail Extension that people talked about from Urbana extending all the way through Mohammed that would help improve walking and biking accessibility throughout the region. We also looked at, considered the Illinois Terminal Expansion as improving equity because it would improve access for transit. We have an overall goal to increase regional ADA sidewalk and curb ramp compliance, increase car and bike share options to make driving and biking more affordable. And the last one in that equity category would be to establish a multimodal transit hub in downtown Urbana, which is a priority that is still looking for funding. So all of these projects are at various stages of development. Some of them are more secure than others, but these are kind of the overarching regionally significant projects that we heard from local agencies and from the public. In addition to those large-scale projects, we also have listed, I'm going to scroll again, some local and unfunded projects, so this is not a federal requirement of the plan. But because this plan functions as a tool for applying for grant money with the federal government, we also wanted to document some of the local priorities in the community in case they were ever in a position where they could apply for grant money. So we have projects from each agency listed in a table and on the map here that they could use as documentation of this is a project that has been reviewed and identified as a priority in our community, has received public input, and therefore should be eligible for federal grant money. So part of the challenge of doing this plan and getting public input is helping people think about 25 years into the future. We don't generally do this every day, and no one, you know, really likes change. And so one of the things that we did this time was we worked with a local illustrator to create a video of some of these changes and what they might look like in the community in 2045 as a way to help people get more comfortable with some of these ideas about change and help them converse about what about these they like or what about these or, you know, what would make them comfortable with these changes in the future? How do we change our actions today in order to create the future that we want? So I'm going to play this video. It's about 10 minutes, and I haven't checked the sound.
Before the internet, before cell phones, and even before there was a man on the moon, the Champaign-Urbana Urbanized Area Transportation Study, also known as KUATs, has had a transportation plan. We have been forecasting the future of transportation in the region since 1964, currently covering an area of about 50 square miles and the cities of Champaign and Urbana, and the villages of Savoy, Bonneville, Tolono, and Mohammed. Trends, technology, and the way we travel is constantly changing. That is why KUATs updates their long-range transportation plan every five years, which includes a 25-year vision for the future. Let's jump to the year 2045 to imagine how proposed projects and initiatives could positively shape our community's future.
What do you think? Should we bike or take a bus?
So from here to Mohammed on the Kickapoo Rail Trail is about 11 miles, then we break for lunch, right?
It's so much different than I remember.
Well, it's been about 20 years now since we've lived in CU.
There's so many people going different places.
We are here at the redeveloped Illinois Terminal in downtown Champaign. The second-floor lounge has doubled in size to accommodate more passengers and additional services like high-speed rail. You will also notice a few new shops as you move through the hall to the new walkway where passengers have easy access to buses, taxis, and rideshare. The terminal grounds have been thoroughly revamped. The new parking garage has plenty of spaces to accommodate travelers and employees of the adjacent office buildings. The old parking lot is now a beautiful green space, a great first impression for visitors to the region. Together, these improvements provide better traffic flow for pedestrians, bikes, cars, and local and regional buses alike.
All right, everyone on the bus. We should be at grandma and grandpa's house in no time.
Let's travel around the region to visit some other improvements proposed for the future. Next stop, East Urbana. University Avenue in Urbana underwent upgrades to improve pedestrian and cyclist safety such as LED street lighting, modernized traffic signals, bike wayfinding signs, accessible ramps, and sidewalks. Motorists, cyclists, pedestrians, and buses can circulate more safely around this area now. When you reach East Urbana, you'll notice familiar green spaces and a few new ones throughout the local neighborhoods. The Learman Community Garden is thriving, and what was once a vacant lot is now an affordable housing development with transit access to employment and other services around the community. What hasn't changed is MTD's commitment to multimodal connectivity by including bike racks on all of their buses. You can still get here or anywhere in CU by taking your bike with you and finishing the last leg of your commute across town.
It's so good to see you.
We are so happy you were here. Did you fly into Willard Airport?
Speaking of Willard Airport, let's soar on over and see the improvements that make traveling into Champaign County a breeze. Businesses enjoy Willard Airport's increased daily flights, which can accommodate their enterprises that are located in Champaign County. Willard's expanded service also adds flexibility for residents who want to travel to more cities. Autonomous vehicles, also known as driverless or self-driving cars, have been sharing city streets for years and have been fully integrated into society as a safe method of travel. Cities can more easily reach their goals of creating safer streets, supporting public transit, decreasing road maintenance costs, and reducing congestion as more people choose autonomous rideshare instead of personal vehicle ownership. In 2045, the airport has also grown into a regional freight terminal. The existing runway capacity for large aircrafts, as well as the easy connections to the interstate system, enabled Willard Airport to expand new and enhanced air cargo services. Leaving Willard and taking US 45 north, you'll see the new Curtis Overpass. There will be no more interruptions for traffic traveling along Curtis Road as trains pass overhead. By 2045, the University of Illinois has reached the net-zero energy goal, and more Champaign County residents utilize solar energy and travel by train to reduce their carbon footprint. A multi-use path on First Street allows research park employees, students, and university staff to cycle or walk to work safely. The increased number of side paths in the region promote a healthier community and reduce pedestrian and bicycle crashes and fatalities. A combination of innovative transportation projects and a focus on health and safety measures have helped the region to flourish economically. In the heart of the University of Illinois campus, students, faculty, staff, and visitors enjoy safe, multimodal connectivity to all the resources the campus has to offer without having to own a car. Local agencies work together to improve mobility within and between the campus and individual municipalities through roadway improvements that facilitate improved bus capacity and frequency, sidewalks, lighting, and bicycle facilities. In locations with high pedestrian and bicycle traffic, technology such as automatic pedestrian and bicycle detection provides better safety, accessibility, and mobility for people walking and biking. More people walking and biking means better population health and better environmental health, as well as less vehicle congestion. Curb space plays an important role in urban accessibility. This valuable public space that used to be dominated by personal vehicle parking has evolved along with our cities to accommodate social functions, additional transportation modes, and rising e-commerce deliveries. Maximizing curb space with flexible loading zones for shared ride services and urban freight vehicles can keep our urban centers active and accessible for businesses and people. Cyclists use bike wayfinding signs and signals to easily move around the city.
Look, that building is so close to the railroad tracks.
It used to be a train station a long time ago, and it was turned into a theater.
I remember going to Station Theater when we were dating. It was a lot of fun. Now we can ride our bikes to the next show.
Here we are at the Kickapoo Rail Trail. This is one of the many stops on this nearly 40-mile-long multipurpose recreational trail, also known as the KRT. The KRT now extends through Mohammed, connecting parks, homes, and businesses in Champaign, Urbana, and Mohammed, as well as Carl Foundation Hospital and the University of Illinois. The KRT made it safe, accessible, and fun for pedestrians and cyclists of all ages and abilities to get around the region. Access to active transportation infrastructure such as the KRT has increased physical activity and overall health in our community.
We're almost there. Let's get off the trail and check out the school I'll be teaching at next year.
Programs such as CU Safe Routes to School continue to work to make walking and biking safe and easy for students, parents, and teachers to get to their local schools. Kickapoo Rail Trail Extensions westward from downtown Urbana have positively affected access to higher education and job training. More neighborhoods have convenient connections to locations that used to be more difficult for pedestrians and bicyclists to reach, such as Parkland Community College. Agriculture has maintained its prominent role in our local economy even as the population and economy grows. New construction has been concentrated in existing urban areas of the region, which has increased population density and preserved surrounding farmland. The KRT now connects Champaign-Urbana bicyclists and pedestrians to the Mohammed Forest preserves. Invasive species management and great care from the community has preserved and restored these vital natural resources. Rural transportation has evolved to meet the increasing need to connect rural residents to urban amenities such as hospitals, shopping centers, and employers. A fixed route rural transit service now connects Mohammed to Champaign-Urbana on top of the existing Rantoul connector that brings Rantoul residents to and from Champaign-Urbana.
This park seems pretty cool. Can I stop at the playground?
Maybe later. We don't want to be late for the concert.
This place has changed a lot.
Bristol Place is one of the oldest neighborhoods in the city of Champaign, but you would never guess since it was revitalized. The area has been outfitted with bicycle and pedestrian facilities, including a greenway that follows Boneyard Creek through the expanded Bristol Park, crossing Market Street, and continuing behind the diverse range of housing types that were developed for residents of all socioeconomic levels. Toward the northern end of the neighborhood, the Barton Center at Human Kinetics Park offers a unique variety of community resources, from outdoor event space and soccer fields to classes and programs. There are opportunities for people of all ages and abilities to meet, play, and learn here.
Dad, when we move here, can we live next to this park?
That would be pretty cool, wouldn't it?
Accessible downtowns are key to strengthening our civic character, regional economy, and engaging our unique neighborhoods. A new plaza in downtown Champaign is a welcoming community space for residents and visitors. The plaza accommodates public events and supports downtown businesses. Expanded bus service to the area reduces vehicle traffic and the need for parking while increasing bicycle and pedestrian safety. Seamless transportation, diverse, sustainable infrastructure, and a welcoming, growing community committed to innovation. This is the future we see for the Champaign-Urbana metropolitan area. The 2045 vision is built around specific transportation goals to improve safety, the economy, multimodal connectivity, equity, and the environment. To learn more about our long-range transportation plan, visit our website, cc-rpc.org/lrtp2045.
So are there any questions or responses to the video or any of the web plan content that we can answer? Rita mentioned that, or someone mentioned that we will be presenting the final version again to you all on the 13th for final.
We'll not be presenting the video or the plan. We'll be just asking for approval.
Any questions? Yes?
Well, not so much a question, but I mean, the video was excellent, really creative, thorough, explained everything very visually, very clearly, inspirational.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. There is another video that we also have on the website that explains the planning process that we follow to develop the plan with all the details. Then it's shorter than this one, but we just wanted to play the vision because that's the end goal of the plan. But we have found out over the years that it's difficult for us to convey the importance of having a plan in place and a plan that looks into the 25 years into the future. Then after a lot of discussion, the staff decided to work on preparing these two videos to provide a way to educate people about what we are looking to have in the future and also to explain how the plan is put in place in terms of getting their input and how their input is used to develop the plan.
And I noticed that it's also multi-language.
Yes.
You have a Spanish and a Chinese version.
Yeah, we have the video in Spanish, Chinese, and we wanted to do it in French, but we ran out of time. But you can, yeah, everything. But you can, yeah, everything is done in three different languages.
Well, taking a futuristic look at things always helps the public get on board and support as well, so that was very well presented, so thank you. Appreciate that, all of you. Ladies, thank you for your presentations today, all of you. All right. I'd like to have a motion to accept and place on file the division updates for physical, okay? Human Resources, Community Service, and Planning and Community Development.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on those topics? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Our next issue on the agenda is the CEO Management Report.
Mr. Chairman, in the interest of time, I'll be very brief. At the December 13th meeting, I will be presenting to you the FY19 Annual Report, which will pretty much encapsulate what's been discussed today and a lot of the work that the RPC has been doing over the last 12 months.
There you go. Thank you, sir. Is there any old business? Okay, any new business? Okay. I'd like to ask for a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
You made the motion.
Somebody needs to read.
Yes.
Just closed session.
Okay.
Whoever makes the motion.
Yes.
Okay. And...
Read all of that.
Yes.
Close session pursuant to 5 IRL CS 122C1 to consider the employment, employment compensation, discipline, or performance of specific employees of the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission.
And then, somebody seconds this.
Yeah, we have a second. All right. Very good.
Thank you.
All right, very good.
Yes, thanks.
And, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good.